I'm Ronnie Sidney, I'm the Director of the Victims and Witnesses Program in Union County. Each April is, the month of April is National Crime Victims Month. And the week of March, week of April, the 7th through 13th, is National Crime Victims Week. National Crime Victims Rights Week is a time-honored tradition. Our proclamation is an important component of our effort to recognize crime survivors and educate crime victims and our community about resources that can enhance victim's assistance in our community. And I thank you for your consideration.
You will also copy that to the clerk? And we can certainly have time if we can take up that part of the nation in our next meeting, it'll be just in time for this event. Thank you. All right, at this time, Tara Pascarosa, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
She wants to address counsel, she's with Oceana concerning offshore drilling in Virginia.
Yes. Thank you Mayor and Councilwomen and mayors for having me here tonight. As the Mayor mentioned, my name's Tara Pascarosa. I work with Oceana, which is the world's largest conservation group protecting our coasts. And so what we're asking for is, a lot of localities and municipalities all over the state of Virginia have passed resolutions opposing offshore drilling. So inside of the packets that I gave you, there's sample resolutions, and there's information about Virginia's coastal economy and how much we actually have to lose, and how little we have to gain if they were to.
Mayor, for allowing us to just do this short presentation, I promise you, I am not a person to mess with a lot of words. I like to usually get to the point. First of all, I did just come in and give you all some bags, and those were what we presented to the community and to our neighbors and businesses, just to kind of help welcome everybody into the neighborhood and just let them know that we do want to be good neighbors. Queen Street, Peer Resource Recovery Center, was formerly known as 84 Main, and we were located in Warsaw. And right here, the town manager, he gave us a nice letter, and I just wanted to make sure that I had one, that just basically said, just pass it back, how, you know, how much they really are going to miss us, and how much we have contributed to the community for over 10 years. And also, here's another little letter that I just wrote personally, that's pretty much in y'all's bags, and it's just a, the letter that is in the bag that just talks to the neighbors and to the businesses, and I just basically wanted everybody to understand what we do. So the purpose of this presentation is to just inform, just inform people about what we do. Queen Street is a innovative, and Peer Recovery Center. We provide a safe recovery environment for the community and its people. We have an open environment with computers, television, socialization opportunities, personal education enhancements, and community integration. It offers a place to find hope and connect with others in recovery. It also encourages an independent life, and up here it says unemployment houses, and that doesn't mean we want a house, everybody, that doesn't mean it's rented or not, that just means we want them to be independent. And also, opportunities to network and discover community resources, build self-confidence, share hobbies, talents, and simply enjoy the connection with others who are traveling a similar path. Everyone is welcome. Realize that recovery is possible. All classes and groups are planned and implemented by people with lived experience. Queen Street is open from 8:00, Tuesday through Friday, open evenings for A.A., N.A., ALANON, as well as NAMI, which means, that's a family support group called National Alliance for Mental Illness. NAMI is becoming a lot more well-known in the school systems, and we're going to be partnering up, we're facilitators, I'm personally going to be hosting a workshop in the library for the schools for children with challenging behaviors. And I was a former school teacher, so I'll be glad to reach out to the Director of Special Education. I know they'll be glad that I'm back, but this time I'm outside in. So, also, one thing we like to say is, if you're not having fun in your recovery, then you're doing something wrong. That's kind of an inside joke, but, you know, it really is true. You take yourself too serious, you know, and it's just, it's going to be too, you're not going to have a good time. So our mission and vision statement is, our recovery center provides a safe place where individuals are respected, encouraged, and strengthened in pursuit of a life in recovery from trauma, addiction, mental health challenges, and local recovery communities of their choice. Now here are some stats, here, that one in five people with adults will have a diagnosable mental health condition at any given year. Fifty percent of Americans will meet the criteria for a diagnosable mental health condition sometime in their life. And half of those people will develop a condition by the age of 14. Over here to the right, there are stages of mental health conditions. Number one is the mild symptoms and warning signs. And then it goes on down to stage two, symptoms increasing frequency and severity, and then three, the symptoms get worse. And then four, symptoms persistent and severe, can jeopardize your life. So, there is a cost into waiting until stage four, and that cost, as you can see, is all the way over to incarceration. If you don't treat it early, which is the $81 per student year, and then all the way to $31 per year for incarceration. Fifteen is the average stay for the hospitals from a seven-day period. Intensive home-based family therapy is $7,000. High-end behavioral therapy for anxiety is about $1,000. So as you can see, there's a big cost in waiting for the fourth stage. And here's some more stats, right here, if you just look at the dark green and light green, it just means that there's a, that the, the problems are about the same in urban and rural communities, as far as substance use disorder. And right here, on this chart, the McCabe graph, it shows the substance use behaviors in high school seniors who misuse prescription opioids. So it's pretty prevalent, prevalent in smoking, that's binge drinking, marijuana, illicit drugs, non-medical use of other prescription drugs. So they're pretty prevalent. And also, here's some more stats on addiction statistics in the United States, and the 21 million people suffer from addiction, 10% only receive proper treatment, only 10% proper treatment.
And Elizabeth's include the DUIs, the DUIs in the community, you know, there's just a lot of alcohol-related offenses, and the youth statistics shown in the McCabe graph show that, you know, like 80% of children, 12 years, are experimenting with illicit drugs, either getting them out of their parents' medicine cabinet, anyway.
Thank you. In studies of critical populations, the completion of addiction treatment and participation in the Peer Recovery Group are more predictive of long-term recovery than either activity alone. So, having both of these is really important, and you can't just do it alone, the activity, you have both. And several studies have concluded that helping others improves one's own prognosis for recovery, and by sharing their experiences, peers bring hope to people in recovery and promote a sense of belonging within the community. And here's some other things that the center provides, hope, through hope, health, choice, empowerment, spirituality, recovering environment, relationship and social networks, and the Queen Street Services underpinned two core beliefs that form the bedrock of Peer Recovery Services philosophy. One, that people with substance use disorder and/or mental health challenges can and do recover with meaningful lives. Two, peers can help each other with their recovery. Queen Street Services are administered and staffed by people successfully overcoming their own personal challenges. The willingness to offer a upper hand to someone who is considering a new way of life is the very basis of who the staff is and what they do. We wholeheartedly believe that recovery from addiction and mental health challenges is possible because the staff are living it. And right here is where we went to the General Assembly, and we were trying to see our rep, but we got the rep for Senator McDougal. He was a lot of fun. So a lot of times, these activities are just helping empower other individuals in recovery. And so, other activities we do are advocacy, just like you saw at the General Assembly, and advanced directives, wellness, fitness activities, 12-step meetings, computer lab, veterans peer support, social field trips, trauma-informed peer support, high key, artistic endeavors, social club. All right, this is one thing we like to say, is we strongly believe recovery, and we believe in recovery, and that it is possible to rid the world of stigma. And there's some more activities we've done with creativity and education, community and advocacy, a lot of fun little things we've done there. And we also like to say laughter is the best medicine, we've had workshops on that, and we offer legal support, we point you in the right direction. Sewing, knitting, crocheting, mindfulness meditation training, employment assistance, we do support unemployment at the center. So that's helping people get more into creative, competitive employment, and help the wellness classes. So you might see some yoga out in the front yard. All right, recovery speakers, rap, that means wellness, recovery, action plan, Spanish, computer instruction, smoking cessation, and cooking. The working definition of recovery is a process of change through which individuals improve their health and wellness, live a self-directed life, and strive to reach their full potential. And below is a component of a wheel of recovery, and I like to point out the bottom one, the nonlinear recovery, usually means that it's not from point A to point B, straight across, it means recovery is like this, it's nonlinear. And there's, and the other components are hope, self-direction, empowerment, respect, strength base, holistic responsibility, individualized, person-centered, and hope. Here's a personal quote, "The Peer Resource Center provides me a safe place to connect with others who have come, who have some of the same experiences, and gives me an opportunity to test drive some new skills in a supportive, healthy setting. As a newly sober person, it helps an alternative to spending all my time at home where alcohol and drugs are my family's primary means of coping." This person said, "The PRRC Center helps me to socialize, fun place to hang out before I go to work in the morning and after work, too. It helps me with my transportation back and forth, where the structure in my life has helped in many ways. First of all, I have stayed at home without the hospital, and I learned coping skills. I have not been in a hospital for a year, and I have been accomplishing a lot of schoolwork." Also, "The Peer Center gives me a place to talk, socialize, a chance to make a little money, to augment my social security. Everybody is supportive. Helps me stay out of hospitals. The group helps me socialize, makes me feel happy. Arts and crafts help me to feel good." And here's more of the information, there's our Facebook page, how do you like that one? Facebook.com/DeagleForSale. You know what that means? That means we're not going to buy into stigma, we're giving it away. Okay, so if anybody has any questions, you're welcome, or I also have plenty of people here involved and would like to answer any questions, but I also would like to give you one of these, too, so you can hang on to it. And we're going to appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Well, feel free to contact us, everything's in the bag, and feel free to call or call or come by anytime. Thank you.
Another volunteer, would you like, if you want to say, and it's citizens who live there, it's exciting.
Yes, and I would say, thank you. Hello, thank you all for allowing me and some of my neighbors the opportunity to come speak this evening, I appreciate it. My name is Mavora Donahue, and I live at 125 Marsh Street, which is the corner of water in Marsh, right behind the elementary school, and about 100 to 158 from this recovery center. I live there with my husband, Vince, and my two children, my husband's and Claire. They're nine and six. And I, first of all, want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about this. We love our neighborhood, we love the town of Tappahannock. We're very proud to be a part of this neighborhood and to raise our children here. You all know we're dedicated to this community. My husband especially spends a lot of time making sure that this is a pleasant and lovely place to be, and I do, too. I don't work here in Tappahannock, but I do spend a lot of time wanting our community to be a place that we want our children to be. And first, the other thing I would like to say is that we're not arguing that this group does not provide great services for people in recovery, people who have mental health challenges. We think that their services are probably very beneficial to their customers, to their clients, and we're glad that they're willing to be here in Tappahannock, providing services for people. My primary concern is that I really don't feel like the services they provide are compatible with the location where they are. It's a small, quiet neighborhood, there are children living in the building that the Resource Center is in, there are children that live right next door. My children live, like I said, about 100, 150 feet from the door. The elementary school is not even a block away, St. Margaret's is not very far away. And our neighborhood is very quiet, we don't get a lot of traffic, like in the evenings especially. They told me that they were open from 8 to 4, at least two nights a week, there's people there until well after 9 o'clock. Mr. Wind has told me he doesn't really want people parking in his parking lot, they're parking on the street, which is fine, it's allowed, but it's not really a location that can accommodate like large groups of people. If I understand correctly, they don't have enough parking spaces for the zoning that they, for the activities they want to do. I've been told by the county zoning person, they have fire code issues. And I just feel like that Tappahannock would love to have the services, but this location is really just not appropriate, and the space itself is maybe not appropriate, as well as the location being so close to the elementary school, so close to so many residential homes, to children who are right there. And I appreciate the services they offer, I just don't know that this is the spot to do it in. If I understand correctly, they've applied for a permit but have not yet received one. If I missed something about that, I would certainly be welcome for an update. And I can't speak for everyone that lives on our street, but I have not been approached by anyone at the Resource Center. I have talked to people at the Community Services Board, I have spoken Miss Fluter on the phone, but no one has come to my home and introduced themselves to me, or said anything to me about what services they're offering, or allowed me to ask any questions about what's going on at the facility. So while I appreciate the indication that they're doing so, it has not happened at my house, and we're home a good bit, so you could find me, or you could find my husband at his office any day of the week. And in closing, I'd just say that I don't think that they should have come to Tappahannock without asking questions about the location, without filing a permit. I don't think they should be given the allowance to have a permit when they are there, just given an exception because they're there now, and what are you going to do about it? It's not fair to our neighborhood, it's not fair to the zoning code, it's not fair to other people who are coming into the town and trying to follow the rules. And I hope that they'll find a better location, that's not where it is right now. So thank you for your time, I really appreciate it, and thank you for all you do for Tappahannock.
Bye, Anne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have much to add, I live on Marsh Street at 119. I am a neighbor of the Donahues, there are only five houses on that street, no one has come, I'm home most all of the time, no one has come and knocked on our door and given us any information. We found out about this through someone that has, actually that lives there. No one is arguing, arguing the fact that this is a great recovery center, it offers great services, it's not in the right location. They did not follow the rules. From what we were told, Mavora listed those, there are plenty vacant offices in this town, as we all know, that would be better suited than on the end of Marsh and 360. We are close to schools, we have children next door, we're not, you know, are these, are these court-ordered people who have to come to these recovery centers? I mean, no one has given us a lot of information, and it's just not the way we do things in Tappahannock. We have to adhere to rules when we buy homes, it should be the same for businesses, and they weren't. Thank you.
All right, we could go on all night with this, we had some representatives from the Senate speak last month at a meeting, I don't believe they won the agenda, we let them speak, we spoke in the night, you've done a wonderful sales job on it. I don't think you really need to sell the council on the benefits to the citizens of the community, and what it does to improve the welfare of the citizens of the community. I don't believe that's an issue. The issue we have right now before us is the zoning requirements, and I believe that's in a zoning situation, am I correct, Mr. Sidney, correct me if I'm wrong, which council does not have any impact on, any influence on affecting. The zoning guidelines are set, the regulations are set, they're looked at to be implemented, you know, equally, unfairly, and balanced throughout the town. So, you know, what those guidelines and rules say are pretty well set, and council by vote couldn't change those right now, they'd do a public hearing, adoption of all new zoning. So, Mr. Sidney, again, correct me if I'm wrong, that's where we are in this whole situation. I haven't heard a single complaint about the center, or what the efforts are, what the goals are, but it's the parking, it's the location for that, and that's going to have to be dealt with through the zoning process, which is the administrative staff of the town. So I want to say this in all sincerity, to hear from you, and you, I think we're sold, I think we are in agreement and understand the benefits of what a program like this has to offer, and I think it is beneficial to the community. But we're talking about logistics here, and where it operates and how it operates. So that's what we're dealing with, and again, council has no, can't just say, hey, we approve it, or we think it sounds good, we can't do that. It's at the hands of the town administration, am I correct, Mr. Sudden? Is where we are, and they're working on that. So any inquiries, I would direct any of you to him, Mr. Saunders, I think they can inform you to where we are in the process and what needs to be done. So I think each and every one of you coming is a great source of support, I mean, this is probably one of the biggest groups of sources of support we've seen for things in a long time, and a worthy endeavor, it's no doubt, I don't think it's any question about that. But we've got to deal with the situation as it is in front of us. So thank you, thank you all for coming, and thank you for your input tonight.
Council have any questions, the fellow?
Can I ask one question of the council, especially with Mr. Sidney here? Is there a specific zoning ordinance that prohibits this type of center?
He can answer that.
No, sir, it's allowed in CC 1, it just has to be all the requirements, except for by the zoning board's requirement, size, space, and traveling, and what the building code requires.
And my understanding was, and I don't mean to be, I don't think, Mr. Sidney, please correct me on this, if my knowledge of this is wrong, most businesses and people, when they want to locate a town, they come here first. We, you know, you come to set up shop and do things, you want to know what the guidelines are, what the rules are, what the conditions are, and to my knowledge, no one ever, it was just kind of a move-in, and maybe some conversation between the landlord, you came and rented a place, maybe the landlord misled you. You know, I don't want to say they did, but I don't know, but to my knowledge, I don't, and if you would have come, in all honesty, I'm sure if you'd come to the town and requested a zoning permit, requested a permit, you would have been informed of the conditions and meeting the requirements of the zoning, and we wouldn't be here having this conversation for that. So we can't undo that, but we've got to find, you know, a solution going forward, and zoning is a tool and a method that we have to do things like that.
We can't undo something that hasn't been done, but we can at least inquire and find out what we can do to meet the requirement.
And town can certainly inform you of any future location, what the requirements are, you know, we do that every day to every business, and every entity wants to come into the town and locate here, it's done all the time.
And what I'm told is that it's mostly the parking issue, not the zoning.
Whether the parking is the zoning.
Yeah, so we're getting estimates for the parking.
And then a letter sent to Mr. Walsh from the building inspector also.
Right, yeah.
So all of these things need to be addressed, and compliance is fine, so all of that, politics, everything is all part of zoning, the document for that, so.
But we are, excuse me, all we did was look at the zoning and go, well, I think we fit that okay, you know, and we should have come here and introduced ourselves to y'all first, I'm quite sure, but in other words, we took a look at those zoning ordinances, and none of them seemed to prohibit what it is.
Well, landlords and tenants are not versed in zoning, you know, well, and so that's what we have, we hired a zoning administrator that does nothing but administrate zoning and our things, so that's, you know, we want the public to come to us, we don't care if the public's in here every day asking us here, it's nothing, Tappahannock is not a town, it's not transparent, we'll tell you, here it is, and this is what you have to comply with or not, then we can debate that, but we'd rather have citizens and businesses and entities do that first, because I can tell you, we could save you a whole lot of work and unnecessary cause of grief, if we could do that.
Didn't the place used to have an art gallery? Didn't the place used to have an art gallery and a physical therapy? Didn't people come and go there as well?
It was an art gallery, and it was very small, and it is zoned for business. But it met all the codes, the parking, all of that. So, and it did well. And it wasn't open until, you know, 9 o'clock at night.
I will ask you, direct, any further things to do with zoning?
I'm sorry.
And Mr. Saunders, they're the zoning specialists. And as long as I've been doing this, I don't profess to know every detail about that.
You don't read zoning?
I have, and I do it from time to time. It's not really exciting, but we have excellent people that know that and take care of that for us. So thank you all. Council, anything else?
I think there are members of the council that would like to try and help them if it comes to having to find another location. That we'd be willing for you to call on us and see what we could do to help you out.
Thank you.
And we've come in good faith and signed a lease, and I would see no reason that we shouldn't be able to do business here other than zoning regulations that don't appear to prohibit this. So I'll get with you, Mr. Sudden. Anything else? Council, anything else?
All right. About your standing, Jared. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.